So, good evening. We're going to open the Norfolk School Committee meeting for May 20th, 2019. And to begin the meeting, I will be looking for a nomination for Chairperson of the School Committee.
I'd like to make a nomination for Thomas Doyle to be School Committee Chairman.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I will turn the meeting over to Thomas to continue.
Thank you, boys. All right, so now we have to...
We should have done roll call first.
Yeah. So, let's... All right, Ingrid's fired from this job. We're going to take this back over.
Sorry.
Okay. So, first off, as we start out every meeting, we do read the mission statement. Ingrid forgot about that part, too.
I was leaving that for you.
Okay, thank you. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Laddie.
All right, so, got the first order business, so now we need a motion to nominate a Vice Chairman, Vice Chairperson, excuse me.
I nominate Paul Cochran to be Vice Chairman or Chairperson.
Enthusiastically second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You vote for yourselves, it's okay.
Aye.
All right, so then we need a motion for Secretary/KP Representative/Legislative Liaison. Do we end up leaving this as one person last year?
We did.
Did this get... Okay, I know we kept moving this around.
The Secretary is only for notes for executive session, and the Legislative Liaison is only if there's pending legislation that we need to address.
Did you want to just...
Do you want to make a motion to separate them?
Is there any issue, Jeff, if we needed it later on?
I know the KP one can be a little challenging.
Yeah, I mean, it feels like I probably should stick with that for now, although it sounds like Midora might have an opportunity in the fall.
Okay. So, all right, so then, all right, so let's get a motion on that, then. All right, so I'll go ahead and make that.
So, I put a motion to nominate Jeff Curry as Secretary/KP Rep/Legislative Liaison.
Enthusiastically second the motion.
Seeing no further discussion, because we already had it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeff. And then, last, we need a nomination for Recording Secretary, who I honestly have no clue currently who that is.
Pam. You'd have to point her, so you'd have to make an...
I was looking around here.
It's like a right-out-me-when you say it.
All right. All right, so do we have a motion? That didn't really work as well. To nominate Pam as Recording Secretary.
I nominate Pam as Recording Secretary.
Secret?
I'll second that.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Pam.
Well, enthusiastically done, just to make sure the notes reflect that.
All right, so then, the remaining subcommittees, let me see, so we have, we've got to do Budget, Policy. Do we actually have to do a motion for the payroll and the bill signers?
You have to designate somebody.
Okay.
In the past, we've designated, the committees voted to have a primary signer and then approve all other members to sign it as a backup.
As a backup. Okay. All right, so why don't we get a motion for, I think we combine these together?
It doesn't list that it's... Do you have to vote on this?
You just have to not have somebody agree.
Oh, yeah, better.
Because the committee already voted to have everybody have authority.
I recommend we have everyone same, yeah. I got feedback from Midora, she said the same.
Okay, so then, just for clarity's sake, so in that instance, I would be the primary for Bill signer and Payroll signer. Everybody else would be the alternate if I'm unavailable. Budget Subcommittee would be Paul and Midora, is that correct?
Yes.
And then Policy would be Jeff and Jen.
Yep.
So, you're making a motion to keep the committees as they stand this year, for Paul and Midora on the Budget Subcommittee, and Jeff and Jen for the Policy.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so, second on that was done by Paul, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, I believe that is all. Is that everyone? Were we missing any of the positions?
No, that's it.
Okay. Public comments? Don't we have anyone here? What do we want to get to, these guys?
They're going to be, they're up after the correspondence.
Okay.
Because we have another group here for presenting.
Got it. All right, so we have a gift thing sticking. So, we've got a couple of gifts here. Sorry, bear with me one second here.
I lost my glasses, so I have a backup pair of glasses.
I have the electric copy.
Oh, that's a nice thing, a copy, thank you. All right, so we have, if you want, get the Walgreens specials out, see if this does anything for me. We have a very, very large school gift fund activity to vote to approve on. It's in a total of $10,846.56. The great majority of this is from Norfolk PTO. It is for 10 different items, it looks like. So, it includes, and I'm going to kind of just give the generals on this, $500 for third grade grants, $500 for special ed grants, $100 for second grade grants, Crayola grants, these are all from Norfolk PTO, STEAM cart grant is also $400-some-odd dollars, $2,500 for a classroom library grant, first grade coin wars was $575, second grade coin wars, $784, kindergarten coin wars, not to forget them, $666, well done. And then additionally, $2,600 for Authors Week, and then a little over $16, $1654.99 for math resources in recess. Those last two from Norfolk PTO would be going to Freeman. The others, with the exception of the first two I read, would be going to HOD. Additionally, we have an Anna Everwine-Tupper trust of $100 donation to HOD, individual donations to HOD of $35, and then finally, from Dunkin' Donuts, library breakfast donation to Freeman Kennedy. So, anyway, those all total an incredible amount of $10,846.56. So, do we have a motion to accept those as read? So moved?
A second.
So, we know further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone who did that, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I think that's the biggest one we've ever gotten.
It is, in one term.
That is impressive.
Next, we have some parent representatives from the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and they wanted to present a gift to the committee, so I'll have you come to the mic and...
Take the work log.
For the camera, if you can just introduce yourselves and your role.
Sure. So, my name is Tais Hickman. I'm the President of the Norfolk Parent Advisory Council for Special Education, and with me I have...
Karen Murphy. I'm the Director of Communications.
And I'm Karen Mazzola, and I'm currently the Grants Administrator.
And so, today, we'd like to present a donation, and I'll let Karen kind of speak to a little bit about where it's going. But we were able to raise a significant amount of money this year due to some of the fundraisers we've had in the community, and some parent night socials that we've had, and so, we wanted to take the opportunity to give back to the Special Education Department. And so, I'll let Karen kind of speak to the donation and where it's going.
Hi. So, we're excited, as this is our first year as board members for the CPAC, and so, we're really excited that we were able to fundraise and provide speakers for our parent workshops, and also provide several workshops for school kids as well. And so, we were thrilled when we got to the end of the year, and we had some extra funds, and of course, we want to be able to put those directly towards our children as well. So, with that said, I had the unique opportunity recently of overhearing two fourth graders who use the motor room pretty frequently. They were waxing poetic about the HOD motor room and how much they missed it. And so, we thought that it might be fun for us to very specifically donate some funds to the Freeman Kennedy motor room to hopefully have the Freeman kids be able to wax as poetically about Freeman as they do about HOD. So, with that, we have a check for $1,000 that we would like to donate, that we would hope to see go towards outfitting the Freeman motor room. Thank you.
Wow, that's awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thank you for your work. So, we would need a motion to accept the donation?
Motion to accept a very generous donation from CPAC.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for all your efforts, too.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight to...
Get it to Pam, and she'll take it, and we will make sure it goes to equipment for the motor room.
Excellent. You have the letters, or you have the spellbook?
I really did have glasses at work, that's all right. All right, so continuing our run of good news for the evening.
You can zoom in on the screen if you want, you can zoom.
Stay away. So, following up on the heels of both those incredibly generous donations we just got, this is really cool to read. So, some of this may already be known, I think there was a message that went out, but our principal at HOD, everybody knows Linda Balfour, was named as the, and I'm going to butcher the person's last name, Passios, I believe, Thomas C. Passios Elementary Principal of the Year. So, I just want to kind of just read some information on this. So, this is, it's a Massachusetts School Administrative Association, please announce Linda Balfour, Principal of the HL of Day School, as the Thomas C. Passios Elementary Principal of the Year. So, congratulations, Linda, her school, and Norfolk Public Schools. So, this is obviously, and Ingrid could obviously add a lot more to this, there's a number of applications, there's a number of finalists. It is fantastic to see somebody within our little stall neck of the woods get recognized against what is pretty stiff competition, even from what we saw in recent presentations of where Mass ranks in terms of its school ranks nationwide or worldwide, or whatever the kind... So, to be able to stand out and get this is amazing. So, that is absolutely incredible. She should be incredibly proud of herself. We are very proud of her, the town, everyone's just proud of everyone, just leave it at that. Donna Ingrid, we will jump in and add to that.
So, it is a very rigorous process. They're looking at all of the districts in Massachusetts and looking for certain qualities in an educational leader. Linda has been with the Norfolk Public Schools for 40 years. She has dedicated service in special education, and as a resource room teacher, as a special education director, and then as the Principal of the HL of Day. I think some of the things that MSAA was really impressed with is that Linda has had a strong commitment to promoting social, emotional learning way before the state kind of made that the trend. So, HOD has had Open Circle Instruction, which is one of the leading SEL programs, in place for 25 years now. A lot of districts are just getting on board with that. So, she was a pioneer in that area. Also has created a really strong culture and climate at the HL of Day. You often hear people talk about the school as a family. It's a very supportive environment, and a continued dedication to lifelong learning, expanding her knowledge of curriculum instruction and leading that with her staff. So, it's a great honor. We're very proud of Linda, and she should be proud as well. And in the next couple of weeks, we're working with MSAA to coordinate the presentation of the award. So, we will send information out to the public, and they will come here to present the award, and we'll share those plans as soon as they're finalized. So, congratulations to Mrs. Balfour.
Standing. Yeah, there's a couple of last words on that, so just one of the things in here, in the words of one of her references, Linda has become a legend, an educator, and principal who was loved, respected, admired by lives she touches. So, there's going to be a formal recognition, in addition to what Ingrid had just mentioned, at a summer leadership institute in Hyannis in July. So, again, congratulations to her, that's absolutely fantastic to see, so...
And then, there'll also be another recognition in Washington at the National Principals Association in October. Very exciting.
All right. I think that moves on to you now, right?
No, it's discussion of capital planning and improvements.
Oh, that's right. All right, so the one item I had this evening was, in addition to the subcommittees that we had just listed out for the year, I wanted to get into adding, would essentially be another Subcommittee, which would be a, what am I here, basically a Capital Projects Committee or Subcommittee. Same thing would be placed for a year, and they would be in charge of any and all, sort of kind of overseeing or helping any capital projects that come along. So, this is separate from any major project, there could be any number of things that could come down the road over the next year. As we know with HOD, from the various updates we've gotten, there are some items we're watching closely, boilers, for example, kitchen items, any number of things. So, it just seemed to make sense to have two of us that would be sort of a conduit between Matt, and I know he gives reports at least twice a year.
Yeah.
But then, the two of us, the two people would essentially act as a conduit between him and the committee, and just kind of keep us in the loop as we know what's going on. That would help for budget purposes, it would help for planning purposes, for anything. So, I'm more than happy to be one of the folks doing it. I don't know if anyone else, if one of you two, I mean, I know Midora and Jen are here, but I don't know how often we'd meet, I don't know what the requirements would be, because it's going to be kind of hard to say, because it's sort of as things pop up. But that's...
And we're also preparing, we've done the space study work, and you've seen the preliminary designs, but we're going to have to move forward, thinking about timelines and construction and, you know, next phases for Freeman Kennedy addition. So, we thought it would be helpful to have an advisory committee that would kind of look at that data and then report out to the full school committee, any updates.
Yeah, just keep up to date, get ahead of stuff as they develop, so...
I know that Jeff is on two subcommittees already.
For KP, yeah.
I'm on one. I'd be interested in supporting this committee as well, but I'd like to give Jen and Midora a chance to weigh in on their interest.
Okay. All right, yeah, we can lead the side for next month, you pick out who is.
Okay. All right, then we are on to my portion of the night.
No, no, that's okay, yeah, I'm extended.
Yes. The first thing on my agenda tonight is we have our technology team here, and they have a presentation to update the committee on some of the work they've done over the course of the year. So, Trish, do you want to introduce the members of your team, and then we have some students here as well?
Good evening. I'm Trish Kelly, Director of Norfolk Public Schools. And I'm happy to be back here again to report our annual report to the committee. I'd like to begin by introducing the technology team. Robin Tousere, who is our Tech Integration Specialist here at Freeman Kennedy School. Robin sees all students in grades three to six, and she's also over at the HL of Day School, and she sees kindergarten. I have Raphael Sardi, who is our Network Support Specialist, as well as District IT Support Specialist, and Ann McKenzie, who is our Technology Teacher over at the HL of Day School, and sees students in grades one and two. And last but not least, our Webmaster, Mr. Mark Pezy, our Tech Integration Support Specialist for the whole district as well. I also have the opportunity to introduce you to some awesome presenters tonight that we have over here, and they are from grades three and grade six. And we have a group of third graders representing Mrs. McFadden's third grade classroom from Freeman Kennedy, and we have a sixth grader from Ms. Lori Bosch's classroom, and she's representing the sixth grade tonight. So, our students are going to come up in just a moment, and they are our innovators, our creators, our critical thinkers, and they are all set to go for tonight. So, we're going to have you guys up in just a couple of minutes, okay? So, the technology team has been working on a number of district-wide projects this year, so I'm just going to go over a couple of the projects that we, the four of us have been working on. So, we had to implement a new firewall this year. So, after endless hours and much research, we implemented a new Cisco firewall for the district. We also upgraded the security and surveillance throughout the district this year. We rolled out Phase Two of the electronic report card. Last year, we rolled out Phase One for K to Three. This year, we rolled out the report card for Four to Six. We also worked on professional learning opportunities for the staff. We implemented a one-to-one Chromebook initiative for grades three to six here at the Freeman Kennedy School, and we worked closely with the Facilities Department this year to put in a brand-new system, PA system, at the HL of Day School. And in the front here at Freeman Kennedy, we put in an additional KeyFob security system as well. So, those are some of the projects we worked on. In addition to the projects, we provided several learning opportunities for staff and students like. Two of the learning opportunities that we had for staff were Professional Learning Days. They were focused on technology in education. One of the days that was held, we partnered with Rantham Public School Technology Team, and our team of four met with their team, and we coordinated, collaborated, and created this awesome technology workshop. It was a whole-day workshop. We had 15 technology workshops offered here. We had about 300 teachers attend, and it was fabulous. And the thing that made it fabulous was that it was homegrown. We taught each other. So, the teachers from Rantham and the teachers from Norfolk all collaborated and taught the whole group that was here that day. The second workshop that we had was also offering tech workshops. We had about 10 tech workshops, and that was all Norfolk teachers teaching Norfolk teachers. So, we moved away from the sit-and-get kind of professional development, right, or the one-size-fits-all professional development, and we moved to this like peer-to-peer collaboration. And it seemed to ignite, engage, empower the teachers in a different way than when the PD had been delivered in the sit-and-get type of thing. The second Professional Learning Day that we had was fabulous because we had student presenters. We had six tables set up, or six stations set up, and we had the staff learning from the students. So, the students were coding and programming and using the makey-makys, and they were teaching the teachers. And that was another twist on technology, and I'm telling you, it was something to have seen. It was really good. And speaking of our tech-savvy students, we had a team of our students selected to be at MasQ this year. MasQ is the largest technology conference in New England for K-12, and we had a group of our students selected to go over there and make a presentation at Gillette Stadium in October. And that was with Mark and Raphael and Robin. And the kids from Norfolk, they were just, they were unbelievable. They were just so engaging and so respectful, and their talent in technology has yet to be seen, I really think. An equally important learning opportunity that was held in October, thanks in part to the PTO, was we were able to bring Katie Greer here to Norfolk Public Schools. Katie is a nationally-recognized internet safety specialist. She's been on the Today Show, she's in every magazine, and the PTO helped bring her here, and she did five workshops. She was here from eight to eight that day. She did a presentation for staff in the morning, she did three different presentations throughout the day for students, and she stayed and did a parent presentation at night. And Katie really focused on how to be safe, how to be mindful, how to be diligent when you're on the internet in this fast-paced, digital, crazy world that we live in. The technology team is passionate about getting our students future-ready, not only in ELA, math, science, and social studies, but we're really passionate about getting our students future-ready in the technological world. The technology curriculum has been designed and will continue to be designed aligned with the Common Core State Standards. Currently, our students are coding and programming and Skyping. They're Skyping with authors and famous scientists, they're Skyping with other students from other parts of the country. They're making global connections here in Norfolk Public Schools. And it's amazing to see it transform right before your eyes from the beginning of the year into where we are here. Our team is and will continue to work towards fulfilling our district vision statement as well as the technology vision statement. I just want to show you this quick video, and then we're going to have our special guest.
[laughing]
So, I just want to say that last part, where you saw the Kiva planks, so, here in Norfolk, we're not all about just a device in your hand or, you know, sitting behind a screen. We're about doing technology in a variety of other ways, and those are pre-engineering tools that we have there, as well as like the Lego walls over in Ann's classroom in the second grade Makerspace Lab, because those non-device items teach the collaboration, the communication, the creativity that the kids need. So, we blend that nicely here. And I'm going to turn it over to Robin, because she has worked with the students on making that happen. So, Robin's going to take over, and she has a very special guest who would be joining her in a second.
Several very special guests. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us tonight. We're thrilled to be here and excited to welcome our guests. So, without further ado, I'm going to welcome Peyton, come on up, Peyton, Jordan, and I'm calling them up in the order that they're going to share out with you tonight, Sadie, Mary, Charlotte, Daniel, and Claire. Before we begin, I just want to thank Mrs. McFadden for making this possible and pairing up and teaming up with me and with the students, and allowing, and making it possible for these projects to become a reality. I think our collaboration is exactly what Trish was talking about, the professional learning opportunities that we provided this year, just kind of everything coming together, and I think what you're going to see tonight is really going to impress you. So, Peyton, will you take it away for us?
This year, we had the chance to become teachers...
This year, we had the chance to become teachers. We each chose a topic we are an expert on and created a book to share with our class. We used our technology tools and skills to teach. Google Classroom and Google Slides made it easy for us to show what we know.
We were introduced to both tools earlier in the year, and when it came time to publish our books, we only needed a quick review to add text boxes, import pictures, change backgrounds, and more.
Sadie, before you go, so I have some of the copies of the books that the students created for you to look at later. I'll leave these here. So, those came from Google Slides and just printed copies of the books they became experts on. So, if you need to learn about skiing, basketball, math, you're all set.
We learned how to work together in Scratch. Kindness is as important as anything else we learn in school. So, we took time to create social studies to show how simple acts of practice can make all of a difference. Use Scratch to write stories and even have very perfect friends to share with them, to share with others. With Scratch, you can program your own interactive stories, games, and animations. Scratch helps people learn and create with reason and work together. These are how schools can much help us overcome a level we've been through our lives. Scratch was created by a lifelong cheerleading group at the MIT Media Center.
We're going to share those out with you in just a couple minutes. I'll let Charlotte take over from there.
Sometimes we get to make connections around the world without ever leaving the school. Not too long ago, we joined people around the world when we got to Skype with Jane Goodall. She talks with us about how even the smallest actions can have a big impact.
We had the chance to submit questions, and we followed along as Jane answered questions about amazing experiences she's had working to learn more about in tech channels. Technology made it possible for us to join a conversation that connected people, students, and teachers around the world.
I am a rising seventh grader, and the Makerspace has been in the school since I was in third grade, when we did various different projects and challenges, like building things made out of marshmallows and... That was the best part. I also got the chance to do a lot of coding programs through school. I did a job master class, so I got to learn the coding language. I think it's been really cool having the Makerspace here on the Makerspace, just supplemented by the skills that we learn in classes.
Claire's being very humble because she was one of our student teachers at our professional learning day in January. So, thank you for that. So, let's take a look at some of the Scratch projects. Do you guys want to come over here and come on up with? So, Mary, can I pull yours up first? So, this is a simple coding program, and it can really be as simple or complex as you'd like it to. And as you heard, we, the students created social stories and to demonstrate kindness. And this is Mary's here, and we're going to show you the inside, which is really the most important part. This is where everything becomes possible. Do you want to tell a bit about your story, Mary?
So, it's like an act of kindness, and the tower right here is a tower blocks. And she's wondering like why it's leaning, and she wants to help her like stop it leaning.
Excellent. And so, we have a few sprites, the two characters, and the towers. So, we'll go full screen. All right, thank you, Mary. Oh, I forgot one, so you're welcome. So, even being polite, right to the end, Mary. And each student, I think, faced unique challenges coming up with seeing your idea come to life. So, inside here, again, we have several sprites or characters or objects that were, that needed to be coded and the various coding blocks that were used. Anything we need to know? Any challenges you faced, or?
Well, at first, I was trying to make it so I could reset it and then make it play so it would reset and then play at the same time. But after I figured that I couldn't do it, I was having a hard time remembering what I did in the first place, but then eventually I found that out by taking it step by step.
Excellent. All right, so just press the flag to go, right? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Daniel. So, Sadie and Peyton, you'll be next. Sadie, anything we need to know?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, a couple of different characters coded, different coding blocks for each character. We'll go full screen, and... Thank you. Thanks, Sadie.
It's not finished.
Still coding. And this is a change in a backdrop, so every, every bit of, everything you see on the screen had to be coded. Is that good? Peyton, I think you did some drawing of your own. You want to tell us about that?
These are my sketches, and I actually made my hair longer by drawing on the side of my neck.
All right, thanks. So, Jordan, inside yours, again, quite a bit of coding for each. You drew in your own sprite, right? Two characters. Anything we need to know? Okay, and just press the flag? So, making the character disappear. All right, and finally... Charlotte, anything special we need to know?
First, after we finish.
Okay, after we're finished. So, we have a few different sprites, different code. So, I think you'll agree, we're in no trouble at all with these, with these pictures are. At the helm of everything. Nice job, everybody.
Thank you, boys and girls. And I just want to take a minute to thank the school committee and the administration and the very generous PTO for not only supporting us, but we're just a vehicle that gets it out there to the kids. So, for supporting the students and the teachers, and we have some fabulous teachers that are really taking technology from the head level. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys and girls, for coming and sharing your learning with us tonight. You did a great job.
Thanks, guys.
They have homework to do, so...
Yeah, there we go.
The audience.
That's our whole fan club. Please stay.
Thank you. And thanks to the tech team for coming out, too.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Okay, the next item in your packet tonight is the school nurses' contract. So, under the Massachusetts general laws, the school committee is responsible for appointing both the physician and the school nurses on an annual basis. The relevant section of the law is attached in your packet, and I've also included copies of the proposed contracts for the three nurses. It is my recommendation that we retain the three current nurses. They do an outstanding job caring for our students. They're highly competent and professional, and, you know, I would recommend that we bring them all back. So, I need a motion to move forward with offering the contracts to the three current nurses, Barbara Giacomo, Jackie McPhilly, and Anne Hurley.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to continue with the nurses, as is.
That's whatever you're going to go with every second. A second?
He threw me out.
A second. Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome back.
And the next would be the second responsibility of the school committee, to appoint the school physician. We have been working with Dr. Henry D'Angelo for the past, oh, six or seven years, I would say. The school nurses find him to be very responsive when they have questions. He gets right back to you. He's done an excellent job. We pay him a $2,000 annual stipend, and so I would recommend that we continue and vote to approve and appoint Dr. Henry D'Angelo as the school physician for, beginning on July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue with Dr. D'Angelo. I second.
Any further discussion? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item in your packet is, as part of the requirements for becoming a green community, the town in Norfolk had to adopt a fuel-efficient vehicle policy, and they voted to, but the Board of Selectmen voted to adopt the policy at their April 10th meeting in 2018. The policy indicates that when any town department's purchased a new vehicle, it has to meet certain minimum energy efficiency standards. Currently, the only vehicle that's owned and maintained by the schools is a 2010 Ford E-150 van, and it's used by the facility department to transport equipment, pick up materials, and to fill out or carry out maintenance functions between the schools and town. So, the town, in order to meet their requirements, is asking the school committee to vote to adopt a fuel-efficient policy for any future vehicle purchases or replacements that we may have, and the policy is attached, which kind of outlines the standards and what's appropriate.
Okay, we have a motion on that.
I make a motion to accept the fuel efficiency standard.
A second?
A second.
Discussion?
My only concern is, setting the standard that is difficult to meet with the budget restrictions.
Yeah, so I was going to take my hand.
Not that I disagree with the fuel efficiency standards, but, you know, if we have an opportunity to go with a lower-priced, you know, used, older vehicle, and we're not able to take that route because of this, then it's, it puts us in a more expensive spot.
Right. I'm not sure that the...
What I don't know is the, you know, the emission standards or the MPG requirements and how that relates to something that's, you know, five years old versus something that's 10 years old. So, it's hard to gauge that.
I'm not sure that we would, as a district, replace the vehicle that we currently have. It was originally purchased for transporting students, hadn't been used that way. It was sitting at Town Hall for years, so we reallocated it. But now that we have a full shared maintenance department, I'm not sure that it would be the schools that are replacing the van. I would, I would expect if the van dies that we will not continue to.
To the town or by?
Well, the town, they already have maintenance vehicles, so I'm not sure that we would...
Oh, it should be replaced.
I'm not sure that it would be replaced. That's the only vehicle we own. I think it's part of the requirement in order for the town to maintain their green community plan.
The other departments in the town is much more important, and it's important for the town overall, so. Yeah, I agree. The standards actually look fairly...
They're pretty minimal. I wouldn't say minimal, but they're, they're not, they're reasonable.
Forty-three percent.
A little further down, it actually spells out the miles per gallon, expectations by vehicle seem pretty reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much any production vehicle currently.
Yeah.
Would already meet these.
If you're heading downhill with a wind at your back.
Yeah. Got a good running start, yeah.
Did you see that? I did, but I...
I think the standard truck gets...
Yeah, most, most current vehicles get more than this miles-per-gallon requirements.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, that was, that was kind of running through my mind, but now that's spelled out a little differently, and I think that's fine, so. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thanks, Ed, and we have our some requested budget transfers, and the recommendation is to transfer $10,000 from District Legal Services that was unspent this year, $5,000 from Special Education Transportation that was unspent, and $30,000 from contractual buybacks, which generally is sickly buybacks that we budget for in anticipation of retirements. We didn't have any retirements that are eligible for that. So, there's $45,000. We're recommending transferring it, $15,000 to Instructional Services to purchase FK, additional Chromebooks for Freeman Kennedy, $20,000 to HL of Day Operations and Maintenance to add security cameras to the HL of Day school, and $10,000 to District IT, Active Directory.
What can you, Active Directory, can you?
I believe that is because we had to replace the firewall and some additional costs in the district.
Now, the fifty, is it 50 Chromebooks for Freeman?
Fifty, 50 Chromebooks, yes. They're two, the common cards are 25, so it's two Chromebook cards.
What does that do? I know we were talking about their technology was aging out from just when we initially bought the...
It's starting to replace some of the Chromebooks and making sure that we have one-to-one ratios for students in the upper grades.
Do you have any idea how many we have in total?
I would have to check with Trish on what the current inventory is. Oh, yeah, we have, we have hundreds.
Oh, that's exciting.
Hundreds, yeah.
It's one-to-one.
Yeah. For all of sixth grade, right now, it's one-to-one.
I need those kids back to helping us with that.
Any questions on budget transfers?
So, the, the transfer from accounts, this is, these amounts are based upon...
Unspent funds in those lines.
Not only unspent, but is it based on expected forecast of spend?
Yes, yep, yep.
And there's no expectation that will, I understand the transportation is a little bit, got a longer tail to it, per se, but what about the legal services? No chance of that being...
That, that leaves us a couple thousand for, for what we would anticipate from now through the end of June, but we don't have any contract negotiations, we don't have any significant expenses that we're expecting in the next 30 days. So, we should be covered with that. Todd felt comfortable that there was enough left that we would, we could comfortably transfer $10,000.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
So, we have a motion to accept those as presented, those budget transfers as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the budget transfers as presented.
A second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
The next item in your packet, we had hoped to have Vicky Saldana, who is our program director, curriculum director for mathematics, and Lisa Aldemicki here tonight to present. Unfortunately, Vicky is really sick and has no voice, and she said, "I can come, but I can't speak." So, I said, "Why don't you stay home and I'll share the information?" So, several years ago, we did a study of the leveling program in grade six for English Language Arts and for math. When we reviewed all of the research, there was really strong support for moving to heterogeneous groupings for both content areas. We made the transition in ELA first because we had a guided reading model of instruction, so students even within the same homeroom that are heterogeneous... instruction, so students even within the same homeroom, uh, that are heterogeneously grouped can receive instruction at their instructional level, because the way the workshop model, um, is designed is there's a mini lesson that targets a broad scale for the whole population, and then students meet in small groups at their instructional level to get additional instruction. That's been very successful in ELA. We also changed the math program at that time so that we eliminated leveling, except we did continue to offer one accelerated math class. And in some years, we have two, depending on the number of students that meet the criteria for the accelerated math. Um, for the last two years, we have been researching and studying the guided math model of instruction, which would parallel what we do in ELA. There's a tremendous amount of research and, that has gone on, there's a lot of communities have, that have made that shift. So instead of teaching math from, from a textbook and doing a lesson for the whole class, there's a mini lesson, and then students are grouped by need based on the content. So you could have students that are really strong in geometry but studying, struggling in algebra, so that you can really receive instruction at your level for each of the content areas. There's pre-assessment that happens, students are grouped by like need, um, and then they, they receive targeted instruction that's designed to meet their needs. Um, our sixth grade team participated in a book study. We've also offered, this will be the second year, we're doing a graduate-level course in guided math onsite, um, and we have, um, teachers from many districts participating in that. So for next year, the sixth grade is, um, going to be shifting to the guided math model in all of the classes, which would mean that there will be no accelerated math course, per se, but students that have advanced talents in math can get that instruction right in their, um, homeroom for math. There's also, the sixth grade math curriculum is very heavy in terms of content and concepts. So the teachers that have been teaching both levels of math said that they're basically covering the same content, might be at a slightly different pace, but it's the same content and material in both classes. So with the guided math model, they can do the same thing within one room. Um, so that is the recommendation. We had looked at students' perceptions of leveling when we look back at the, um, ELA model. Students overall, uh, preferred to be grouped with their peers in a homeroom class and not go to a particular class based on their instructional needs. So that, we're really excited about it. We will be offering that graduate course again. Most of our sixth grade team is, is participating in that course. Um, it will not impact students' ability to access the accelerated math in seventh grade. Neither Rentham or Plainville leveled at sixth grade for math and have never leveled. Um, so students will still be able to, based on teacher recommendation, and the test that KP gives for the accelerated math to go right into that program in seventh grade. Uh, we think it's a better model, that, um, there are many districts that have been using it successfully and have seen really positive gains in terms of student achievement. Foxboroughs had guided math in sixth grade for years, um, and they do offer and host a guided math group for middle school, uh, teachers. I believe, uh, Vicky has indicated other districts, Westboro, Cambridge, Medway, and several in our area are also making that shift at the middle school level, not just at the elementary. So that's the, um, the principal and the math director will be presenting that information to parents of sixth grade students during the, I think it's on June 3rd, when they're going over the Bourndale, they'll go over the math program too and answer any questions parents may have. Any questions on that?
Yeah, one question I had, this is what the effect would be on middle school, but I guess that...
It will be...
It sounds like that's the way it's going.
And I think we'll see better achievement for students and much more targeted tiered instruction. It allows for flexible groupings, like I said, because some kids may be really strong in one part of math and struggle in another, and this allows them to receive advanced instruction when they're ready for it and to, um, have reteaching and support when they're struggling with a concept, so. Great. Uh, the other, Jeff, you can support me because I believe you're at the KP meeting, but I just am going to give an update. The King Philip School is, Committee is researching and studying the possibility of changing the start time. So as people are aware, there's a lot of research out there on adolescent brain development, and it indicates that students during their teen years need a lot more sleep, and that many, um, don't benefit as much as they could from their first period instruction. Um, because of that, the, they have a committee that has spent the year really looking at the research. They'd like to come to the June 11th School Committee Meeting for Norfolk to present their findings. Um, and they are also going to formulate an advisory committee to look at what it would be, what would be involved in implementing that model. They've invited the elementary districts to participate in that. Um, they would like us to have a teacher, a principal, and a parent, um, from the elementary be part of that committee. Um, they will have three school committee members from each of the towns present, um, from their school committee. They're open to having other school committee members participate if you'd like to. Um, the reason, one of the reasons they're looking to have the elementary representation on that committee is there is a potential impact on our district budget, um, because we share buses, and the bus contract will be up at the end of the year and we'll have to rebid it, and if we're rebidding it without that sharing, it could impact cost. It may not, because there may be ways that Homes can partner, uh, Homes has been or only bitter in the past. If it was Homes again, they may be able to pair them with another district, maybe they can bus share with Franklin, um, you know, those are all unanswered questions. Um, but that's what the committee's job is for next year, is to explore what would be the impact on the transition. There also might be a possibility that we could look at a slightly earlier start time for elementary districts. Um, there's a lot of districts that start 8:20, 8:25. We certainly couldn't start our students the time the middle school starts, which is like 7:20 or 7:40. That wouldn't be feasible, but, uh, they want to explore if there's any way to partner with any of the districts. Um, I think Rentham starts at about 8:20 now. Um, so it, it's just a study committee, they just wanted to be inclusive so that everybody could be aware of the process and what the pot, potential impact could be, um, and to explore whether there's any interest or any possibility of partnership. So...
I know Franklin just went through this recently, and they kind of did the same thing, they formed a committee, and I don't, I'm hearing this second and third hand from Franklin residents, but the process itself was flawed, so it just seemed like they didn't get community buy-in, and then the meeting, and then there, no one, and the whole thing ground to a halt. So the more we can do, so it's good they're coming on the 11th.
Yeah, they're gonna come present the research, yeah.
And be thoughtful as far as who's gonna be on that and what's communicated to folks, because the rumor mill could start, so I, I think the better messaging that is there so people have a chance to make informed decisions is better, because they, they really had a, they, they went back to square one, as I understand it.
Yeah, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of other considerations in the start time, which is why they want broader involvement. So you have sports schedules and athletic schedules after school, but you also have a lot of, um, we have a lot of middle and high school students that babysit their younger children, so if they're not home before, so there's a lot of things to consider, um, and they, they want to have an inclusive process, so we can all be part of that. Is that accurate, Jeff?
What's interesting is that there was a lot of discussion about this at last night's school committee meeting, and specifically, one of the recommendations from a audience member who had previously been on the school committee, um, had wanted to expand what had been proposed by, uh, Mr. Zinni as the committee, and they had modeled it off of Franklin, so that's interesting, because they made it sound as if the Franklin experience had been a success. So I'm now unclear if it was like a lessons learned sort of thing, um, because it was a lot more robust approach than what Mr. Zinni was planning. Um, but I think there would be some concerns that your committee gets so large that it becomes unwieldy, so I think you've got to find a balance.
Yeah, I read the, um, the proposal Franklin had, and I'll give them points for boldness, I mean, they, they went for it. Um, but I think there was some items that just caused a lot of heartache in terms of, like what you were mentioning, as far as maybe the older kids are watching the younger kids, and there was people in my office that I worked with, they're like, "All right, you've got my seven-year-old getting home at 1:30 in the afternoon for this proposal." And there were three different proposals put forth, as I understand it, and they were like, "I, I have a job, I don't know, how am I gonna be there? Now you're adding daycare costs that I didn't have before, because I had the high schooler watching it, so..." Um, it just, it, it, it didn't work out, so I think they essentially have called a timeout, and they're like, "Okay, let's put this on, put this on a back burner for a year, and we'll restart it." But the, the point of making is that I, I don't, in their quest for boldness, I think they went way down the road, and I don't know how much people knew, and at the 11th hour, sort of the community became aware of it, and then it became a whole thing. So whereas if it's out there from the beginning, so this is a good first step, have them come June 11th, have them explain this, ensure that whoever's on this, there's constant workshops and messaging and whatever the case is, so people have every single opportunity to ask the questions that need to be asked, and then, could be the asked question, then come up with better ideas, okay, let's go that then.
So that was one of the things, I think, the, the person who brought it up was recommending, initially, there were only two school committee members listed. Um, there was insistence, I think, basically on three for the exact reason that it then becomes a public forum, minutes need to be taken and published, the open meeting laws are in effect. So then, there is some openness. I don't know how closely people pay attention, but it's there.
But the meetings would be open to the public and meetings available, agendas available.
Everything that's possibly out there as a discussion point should be out there as a discussion point, nothing, because then you're operating, and no matter if it's unintentionally or unintentionally opaque, it shouldn't be that way. So put the stuff out there and then see what's, see what's happening. So, yeah, I think this is a fantastic first step.
And I was really pleased that they reached out and included the elementaries, because, you know, in, there have been quite a few districts that have started to make that shift and have reorganized the schedule, but when you're working within one district, you can make your elementary start a little bit earlier, and the middle school a little bit later, but you're running all the buses. KP really impacts three other feeder districts.
Right, right.
So it was, while they could make a unilateral decision, they really reached out and tried to think about what are the implications and how would this affect the elementary districts and the shared families. I mean, we have families in both schools, so, um, we'll, we'll, once we have more information, they'll come the 11th, they said that, to take about 15 minutes to do the presentation, then we'll work on getting information out to the community, select, looking for people to serve on the, um, advisory committee to KP next year.
Great.
I only have one other item. And it is, so annually, the school committee has to appoint a representative to serve on the BIKO board of directors, and the BIKO, BIKO is the Special Education Collaborative that we are part of. Uh, there are 13 other member districts. BIKO provides programming that is, um, designed to meet the unique needs of some of our students that we're not able to serve within the district. Um, we share those services, again, with the other 13 member districts. They typically meet on Thursdays at 11:30. Uh, the board, the, the appointee can either be a school committee member or the superintendent. Um, I have been the chair of the BIKO board for the last year. Um, I'm happy to continue to serve. If somebody else would like to be on the BIKO board, that's fine, too, uh, but we need to nominate and appoint somebody.
Aside from Thomas's interest, I'd like to appoint your doctor.
All righty. Hold that non-doctor over my head.
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations. Sure. Uh, okay, and then moving on to subcommittee reports, Jeff, I don't know if you have anything beyond what you just had mentioned.
No, that was my one note that I was gonna share, was just the...
Okay. Um, and then within policy, we just have a first reading on student fundraising activities, and then a second reading on crowdfunding. And then beyond that, we do have two votes, um, which I found if you want to do these on the...
Subcommittee update? No, listed.
Well, the budget was passed.
Good job.
It's that time of year.
What was I saying? Uh, we do have two votes on incidental changes for policy for tobacco products on school premises and tobacco use on school property by staff. I don't know if Jeff has anything to add to this beyond, that they're just assumed.
Changes, no, I don't have anything to add.
So do we have a motion to accept the incidental changes on both policy A, D, and C, as well as policy G, B, E, and D?
Really just expands the definition of tobacco products. There's not a substantive change.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, yes. So moved.
A second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
As Paul noted, uh, budget passed, so I conclude your report. All right, so we just need a vote on the minutes for the April 2nd meeting, and then, as we just discussed, the next planned meeting is gonna be June 11th, so we'll have to figure out if there's any issues with that date. I am not aware of any.
Not with me.
Okay, so make a motion to accept the minutes from the April 2nd meeting?
I'll second.
Okay, assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we are adjourned until June 11th. Thank you, good night.